Suzanne.
Thank you Mayor Levy, I will take roll call.
Thank you.
Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember LeVar.
Here.
Councilmember Sonier.
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay if everybody will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody, we are agenda item number three and the Golden Meadows Dog Park presentation. Cindy Keating and I think Bianca Bryant is gonna join at some point.
Yes, good evening Mayor Levy and council members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Bianca Bryant this evening. Bianca is a senior Girl Scout from Troop 3649 and she is working on her Girl Scout Gold Award. Tonight she will presenting her proposed project which is the Golden Meadows Dog Park. Bianca presented her project to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on June 13th with unanimous support from the board. The site was posted and a neighborhood meeting was conducted on August 22nd. And so tonight we're here to give you this presentation. So after the presentation Bianca, myself, Sally or Chris will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
First off I wanted to thank you guys for allowing me to present you guys with my project. It means a lot to me and this project is super important to me.
Bianca, before we go any further just give us your name and your home address please.
My name is Bianca Bryant and I live at 78 Bar Lake Circle in Divide Colorado.
Thank you very much.
So I first wanted to share a little bit about me. I am 16 years old and I go to Woodland Park High School and I'm a junior right now. I've been Girl Scouts for 11 years now which is since first grade for me. And I own four dogs myself, two Shih Tzu's and two Golden Retrievers. I have volunteered in many places including Chi-Cross and keep Woodland Park beautiful. I have earned my Gold Award Bronze and Silver Award and I founded a charity project outside of Girl Scouts called Choose For The Soul at age 13. What is a Gold Award? A Gold Award is the highest award within the Girl Scouts of the US. It's earned by senior and ambassador Girl Scouts. And what I have to do is create a community legacy while solving a sustainable solution to our problem. So I tackle the issue of course either locally or globally. So many people ask why the name Golden Meadows. But I wanted to tell my story in the future of course about well one, I have two Goldens myself and two, I'm working on my Gold Award project and it means a lot to me that people know that. My Gold Award problem. Many people in our community own a dog but don't give it the necessities it needs like exercise and socialization. Compassion Animal Hospital said that over 70% of the dogs that go in there are overweight which is extremely, extremely high. So what's the solution to this? A dog park will provide an enclosed area where dogs of all sizes can of course run and play and exercise. So some lack of socialization and exercise can include aggression towards other people and dogs of course, obesity and other health issues, early death, they can get super bored and of course can escape or harm themselves by trying to solve the issue of boredom. So I wanted to watch this short clip about the overview of the land that I'm looking at So that land that you guys just saw was Fountain Creek Greenway property which is about four acres. It's adjacent to the Fountain Creek, or not Fountain Creek, sorry, American Discovery Trail. So why is it a prime spot? One, it's close to town. It has shaded area like you guys saw for the dogs and it's close to the apartments and the neighborhoods around there. It's also close to the shopping center over there by Safeway and it's good for the businesses but not only the businesses, it's also good for tourists stopping by. If they're stopping at Safeway or any other you know business over there, they might have to let their dogs out and they can of course walk over to the dog park. It also has a parking spot which I will show you later and it's on the American Discovery Trail. So like I said, it's about four acres but we'll only be using at least three-fourths of the acre. Here is a picture of the property. The blue area around here, around here is the property line but we'll only be using about the yellow portion around here. So there's plenty, I mean there's tons of room where we can of course expand and grow. Here is the fencing and the gates that we'll be using. These two on the outside here, those will be vehicle gates in case we need to you know get any trucks or anything in there to mow it or maintain it in general. And then these four gates right here are self-latch gates. So when you walk in, there's an enclosure to let your dogs off the leash before you enter or exit the dog park. So here's the parking area that we're looking at. We're no longer doing gravel, we will be doing asphalt milling. But it's about 170 feet by 50 feet which can fit about 15 to 19 cars of course. And just in case we need extra parking, I talked to Safeway and they said that it's okay if we use some of their parking lot. So there is a footpath that connects Highway 24 underpass to of course the American Discovery Trail. Rules and regulations are very, very important. All rules and regulations of course can be adjusted among the discussion of the city but some popular rules that were used in other dog parks are one, use the park at your own risk which is just like any other park in Woodland Park. Of course owners are legally responsible for their dogs at all times. Dogs must be on a leash until completely inside of the dog park which is of course to make sure that the dogs are okay and they don't run loose and hurt themselves. Handlers must be 16 years or older which is a common rule. Children under the age of 13 must be accompanied by an adult at all times. No toys can be left in the dog park. Aggression towards other dogs which includes excessive barking are not prohibited and you must leave. Owners must pick up after their dogs. Food and glass containers are not allowed and can be harmful to their dogs. And dogs that are aggressive, in heat, sick or under four months old are prohibited. And of course we'll have a small dog and large dog area. So dogs under around 16 pounds are allowed in the small dog park area. While they can go in the large dog park area but we just wanna have that safety zone for the smaller dogs. So some supplies that we'll be using are brown vinyl coated chain link fencing which is a very, very nice fence. We'll have two 10-foot vehicle gates, four 4-foot self-latch gates, the asphalt milling for the parking, five benches, wood chips. It has been, there's a study that went on about how dogs target a certain area and especially if there's wood chips on it so it'll help reduce the urine smell. We'll have five or more doggie stations which will include of course bags there and a small trash can but it's been known that people stuff their trash inside of those. So we'll have two bear-proof trash cans on each end so people can throw their personal items away. And then of course we'll have the park maintenance and signs including keeping your dogs on leash and the rules and regulations. So cost. We'll have the donated supplies that I'm already getting which include benches, wood chips and doggie bag stations which is approximately $5,000 by itself. I also have tons of donated labor which includes a contractor, installation transportation of our fencing, installation, transportation of wood chips, maintenance and installation of the doggie bag stations which is about $30,000. Now, those are just those costs. So what am I, of course, the rest of the money I'm gonna have donated which is gonna include the fencing and gating, the signs, the bear-proof trash cans, small trash cans and the milling slash transportation and installation which is about $22,500 which would be the extra money that I will be gaining by doing money-earning activities. So the cost that you guys are really gonna be saving and the things that I'm doing will be about $57,500. The objectives of the dog park. One, I'd like to partner with the city to obtain an open space for the dog park. I'm also working with local businesses right now, private supporters and organizations to find the donated materials and raise money for the materials not donated. And I'd like to have this project completed by June 1st 2019, earlier if possible. So I did a kind of study on my Facebook page. Why do you think a dog park is a good asset for our mountain town and how can it benefit us? Many people said that it's good for not only the dogs to gather and socialize but the people as well. And it's a place that people can exercise while traveling with their dogs. There is an app where people track dog parks and it's been known that people target places that have dog parks in general. And we have a lot of senior citizens in this town that don't get the chance to you know go out and walk their dogs on a daily basis. So it's important that they can have time to socialize and relax while they can get their dogs the things that it needs like socialization and exercise. Some benefits of the dog park to the community are one, it raises property value. Dog parks are a amenity. They can foster a safer and cleaner environment. There's a neighborhood watch environment of course because it's surrounded by a neighborhood and businesses along with apartments. There's a dedicated green space which can feature a feature that is sought out after the communities everywhere. It's a place to network, socialize and relax. Users can share business and service information of the community. They can socialize across a spectrum of all ages. It's a relaxing and enjoyable activity. And it's been a study that 44% of American households own a dog and it's a place where a dog of course can just be a dog. Trend supporting building a dog park. Dog ownership went up 29% nationality in the last 10 years. 44% of households have at least one dog like I said. And there's approximately 1.7 dogs per household which is, after doing the math, over $5,000 or five dogs. Number of dog parks went up 20% in the last five years and approximately 1,500 dog parks in the US. Also, dog parks are the fastest growing segment of city parks in the US. So here are some of my local supporters that have been helping me a lot. Thank you. Are there any questions?
First I think we need a round of applause. Great work Bianca, just amazing. Let me ask you this, what would you like from us?
Well, of course I need you guys' support in creating this dog park and I also would like to make sure that the budgeting is included in your 2019 budget.
And it looked like you need about $22,000, how much would you expect from the city?
The city is not gonna pay a dime because everything that I'm doing is gonna be fundraised because it is a Gold Award project. So I'm gonna be doing activities to raise that money which I need you guys' approval before I can start those activities exactly. But I'm planning on of course doing things like I was thinking a dog run maybe or something like that. Or people have been saying that if they want to say part of the proceeds that people buy at a restaurant can go to your dog park. And there's a ton of people in Woodland Park and Taylor County in general that are wanting to help me out.
Sounds good Cindy, you wanna tell us a little bit about the process of securing that land?
So the city currently owns this land. It's an open space right behind Safeway, it's Fountain Creek Open Space. So we don't need to acquire, we just need to have approval from council to have this development.
Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I assume you go through the regular planning process and we would do all that kinda stuff to bring it to council for a public hearing and things like that. This isn't a public hearing, we're just getting a presentation.
Sally, can you help answer that?
Sure. Our thought was that this is land owned by the city. It's zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development and it's a permitted use conditionally and as long as council is wanting to build this type of facility we could move forward with a site plan and zoning development permit and not necessarily have a hearing. It's your decision.
You see any downside Sally?
I don't. Now if council prefers to have a hearing and, but we had a neighborhood meeting and it's been part of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that endorses it. It's really an improvement that the city would make, Bianca would make on the city's behalf.
I would suggest we do a hearing, there's been some public feedback and things that I've heard and I think it'd be useful to do a public hearing down the road.
Is there, I would say, if I may?
Please.
Is there, are there folks in the audience this evening that would like to bring anything to the council's attention?
Yeah, young man, come forward, are you Kent?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Come right on up and give us your name and address and.
My name's Kent, Markley. I live at 1075 Woodland Avenue. I have so many problems with this dog park, I don't even know where it started. I have two houses on Woodland Avenue, 2218 Woodland Avenue, straight across the street is 1075 Woodland Avenue which my mother lives at. To come, I built this dog park right out of her back door. She's retired. We bought a house, we bought the land, cleared the land, built a house for my mom to retire and live there. And she got to listen to a dog bark from sunup to sundown every day. That's in no way fair to her. Sorry, I'm a little upset about this. I have two houses on Woodland Avenue and we didn't hear about this till last night. A neighbor came by with the paperwork, the drawings, you know, what kind of a... I'd like the venue by the way for trying to do something nice for the city but this is not the place for a dog park. Unfortunately, I'm pollution. What are you gonna do about Fountain Creek watershed? Has anybody done any environmental studies on the effects of this on the watershed? We're all in wells. What kind of effects it's gonna have on our wells? It's 50 feet from the well backyard. Noise, property values aren't gonna go up for the house that I own. Nobody's gonna buy a house and make it a parking dog park. We need to have a hearing on this and we need to give it to all the neighbors. My neighbors don't know about this. The ones I've talked to haven't heard anything about it. We need to have a hearing, we need to get public opinion. Can't just come in there and, what about the erosion? Have you ever seen a dog park with grass in it? It's gonna wash right down into the Fountain Creek watershed. They spend millions of dollars to shore up the sides of it so it doesn't erode. I've been on it for a long time. Really like to have a venue where we can address all these issues without me just standing up here winging it. I'm not very good at this as you can tell. This is not fair to people in the neighborhood. Nobody's been notified, there's nothing in my mailbox, nothing, you know, nothing's been done at all. Mr. Mayor, can you tell me how this is fair for the people who live there?
Well, actually Kent, right now, what I will say is you do a really good job of being there. You made your point.
Are you shaking?
Yeah, yeah. So what?
I'm not gonna just.
You think you're the first one that the record's shaking, don't you? You made your point and you made a great point and I, council hears you, trust me. And so we'll move forward and we'll look forward to seeing you. And Council McCarr has already noted that a hearing would probably be the next best step so.
I don't do much of this kinda stuff.
Understand.
I like to find out about the hearing.
Understand. Understand in the hearing too and your neighbors, you get to come and present your case and we always allow that. And you may or may not be happy with the verdict but we're gonna get all the information that we can possibly muster up and try to make the best decision for the community. So I appreciate you being here.
Suzanne, can you, can you address that question for me?
Put it out in the newspaper?
Sir, if I may, the process is we post the agenda and we post it quite in advance. So we will do an initial posting Sally or just a public hearing?
Post where?
In the newspaper, on the front doors of the public buildings.
On the city website. Our Facebook page.
Can we give Mr. Markley?
I can send you a personal email.
That'd be great, it's my name with the number 2 after you at gmail dot.
Okay.
Suzanne, can we tell him today when the public hearing will be?
I have to confer with Sally to see when she would be ready to do that.
We'll also put a public sign right there.
Yeah, there'll be a public notice, a sign posted, sir.
So you'll see a sign.
And that will tell you the date and time of the hearing.
Maybe you could share your phone number as well sir and then we could, we could give you a courtesy.
Privately.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Send an email.
I don't wanna write it, it's not me.
My wife's on the Woodland Park page, we haven't heard anything about this on there.
Okay. It's okay, excuse me young lady, you need to come to the podium but it's okay.
We're talking about a dog park out my mom's back door and at the end of her property we're talking about an apartment lot. Where there's a nice green walkway park and the fact that these dogs are overweight is ludicrous to think that these people that have these overweight dogs are gonna use a dog park. Woodland Park has more open space than most cities anywhere. Go up to 770, throw your dog out in the truck and walk him like I do. Come on man. You should think these people that have overweight dogs are gonna take them to a dog park? When you got so much open space in Woodland Park that, it's crazy.
We'll look forward to hearing from you when we have a public hearing.
Thank you.
Bianca, I wanna, I wanna mention, I'm sorry Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is an excellent thing, I'm an ex-boy scout and I love that you're in scouts. I don't see enough people doing scouts anymore. And regardless of how this turns out, we're gonna certify whatever it takes to get you your award. At least I am, I assume the rest of the council will too. We may be looking at things as location and environmental impacts and things like that. No offense to anything you've done, you've done a great job, nice presentation. But we will, we'll be looking at other issues that are big community issues. There might be other places that would work better for bringing in tourists than behind a Safeway for instance. I don't know. We'll see all this in the presentation. But I wanna assure you that whatever it takes to get this award for you, you've done excellent work and it seems to me like it's above and beyond and should be sufficient to get your award no matter what we do up here.
I agree with that.
You're right.
You're getting more and more comfortable, aren't you? Thanks, council what else? Noel?
I'll go ahead and speak, can you guys hear me okay? Bianca, thank you. I was there for the initial presentation and this has improved quite a bit. Some of the concerns that I addressed that I brought up at the initial posting, I still don't think they've been addressed yet. Some of the things that I think that would help the council would be potential other locations. For example, do they have to be in the city? Have you gone to the county and talked to the commissioners and see if they have a location or a potential dog park? It doesn't have to be city. I mean this project doesn't say Woodland Park, does it? No, okay, good. Concerns are, yes it looks like it's being paid for initially but the maintenance cost over time, I mean eventually donations are gonna run out, there's only so much money out there. So long-term would be a concern and that would be a budget issue. Environmental, I mean I did bring that up where urine and you brought it up potentially but over time it just, it's gonna get saturated. There's just no way that that much urine can stay without causing a smell for the community or for the houses around there. Noise, that was one we talked about. I guess I go back, I think of signs, there's could be signs on the highway pointing to the dog park. That's gonna be a cost, maintenance is gonna be a cost. So maybe step back and expand your boundaries and say hey, maybe there's something in Divide. Maybe the commissioners would like something in Divide, a dog park there. I know there's a beautiful park there with a basketball court and there's a walking area. I mean that's beautiful land for a dog park. So does this have to be specifically Woodland Park? No. So you know, I give the ball back to you and I think you've got more homework to do. The environmental study, that's gonna cost money for sure. So we have to look at that and find out how much that's gonna cost. But thank you very much and the total improvement from the original, so congratulations.
Anybody else? Paul?
May I say I deeply appreciate what you are doing. You have a very big heart. I'm sure you're an A student. Don't give up. You're going for the gold, you're gonna get it. And this is just another lesson. Thank you so very much.
Please.
Congratulations on your presentation, it's excellent. I 100% support a dog park in the community. I can't necessarily say just yet that I support the location. There are variants of reasons and concerns that as the government, we're welcome to your first taste of bureaucracy that we're going to all. It's a huge project for you to take on with this award and I appreciate it. Don't get frustrated, just have patience and that's what's gonna happen when you're dealing with the government. Continue on and thank you very much.
I'll say thank you very much, I think you've done a marvelous job. And I would agree with Hillary, don't be discouraged. Don't let this, don't feel like you've been defeated because you're just getting started. And it's a worthwhile goal and you'll find a fit. So just keep persevering and you'll get there.
Bianca, thanks very much, thanks again. Great job. And that's what Woodland Park's all about, right there. Okay, we will move on. Okay, we will move on, proclamation declaring September tenth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as CML's Cities and Towns Week, and Suzanne Leclair.
Thanks, Mayor Levy. As council will recall, in past years, we've always celebrated, um, through CML, Colorado Cities and Towns Week. This week, this year, it's September tenth through the sixteenth, on the dais, you have some little goodies from CML, you have this handy-dandy clapper and Band-Aid holder, there's also a stack in the back for the, um, citizens to help themselves to. And Mayor Levy, will you please read the proclamation into the record?
I would love to, thank you very much. Recognizing Colorado Cities and Towns Week, September tenth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is depending upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas municipal government officials, volunteers and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by municipal government in our lives. And whereas the Colorado Municipal League's member cities and towns have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week offers an important opportunity to convey all the citizens of Colorado so that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Woodland Park encourages all citizens, municipal government elected officials and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Section two, that the City of Woodland Park supports and encourages all municipal governments to actively participate in Colorado Cities and Towns Week, passed and adopted this sixth day of September, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor Levy.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on, we have no additions, deletions or corrections tonight, we'll move on to the consent calendar, Suzanne?
Thank you. This evening, council before you, we have two items on the consent calendar, the first being the approval of the minutes of the August sixteenth council meeting, and then the approval of the statement of expenditures for July two thousand eighteen. Sir?
I appreciate, um, the addition of the YouTube, uh, time marks, those are great.
I'm glad you liked that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Move to approve the consent calendar? Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
And the second, Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we will move on. Um, Mike, do you wanna say anything about the July eighteenth statement of expenditures before? It's all good?
That was, that was all approved.
Good. All right, move on to public comment, and Deb Miller?
Good evening, Mayor, Deb Miller, Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce. I stand before you tonight and I hope in your mailboxes, you received a letter from the chamber inviting you for our twenty-first annual Oktoberfest keg tapping, which is coming up on Saturday, September fifteenth. Um, we invite you to come and participate with that. Um, our, Mike Schaffner, the general manager of the Newmont Cripple Creek and Victor Gold Mine, will be the actual person tapping the keg, but we invite each and every one of you to be there that day for the keg tapping. Over a two-day period, we bring in about five thousand people for this event, and we're excited about it. And, um, one of the new things this year we are offering is, I'm not a beer drinker, but what I've heard for the last thirteen years is we do not have authentic German beer. We will have authentic German beer this year, starts with a W, and it goes on like, something like that is the name of it.
Warsteiner.
So, I would invite everybody to come out, that's coming up in about ten days, and so we would love to see each and every one of the council there, thank you.
I believe that's at eleven o'clock, right?
It is at eleven a.m.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Deb. Okay, um, can't quite read this name, so excuse me, is it Anthony Seavey?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, sir. If you'll give us your name and home address, please.
Um, first, thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Anthony Seavey. Um, I did, I'm prepared to talk to the council this, uh, this evening. I'm recently retired, um, as the Fort Carson Emergency Manager. I live at six oh six Southwest Street. As an emergency manager, one of my various tasks was mitigate threats. Since the county closed West Valley Street, um, the, the number of vehicles traveling on the, on the adjacent roads have especially increased, especially Southwest Street. The traffic flow is not acceptable, nor safe anymore for our community, especially for the neighbors that live in that, uh, that surrounding area. I'm here tonight to ask the committee to consider making it my intersection a four-way stop. The intersection includes the roads of Pine Ridge Avenue, Shady Lane and Southwest Street. This intersection is the first intersection from county to city. Posted speed limits are twenty-five miles per hour. The intersection will require some modifications. Currently, cars traveling north on Southwest Street cannot turn right on Pine Ridge if a vehicle is sitting at the top of the hill. Two trees that are sitting there at the corner will need, uh, in the easement, will need to be cut down. The curb will need to be modified, um, for safely, um, so vehicles can safely turn. The Woodland Park Police Department has placed a speed monitoring device on Southwest Street in front of my house. The data that was collected from the device when the mon, when it was monitoring traffic headed south on Southwest Street showed that three out of a hundred cars was doing over fifty miles per hour. This means that there were many vehicles traveling at thirty-five or forty-five miles per hour in front of my home. My, my son, my wife and myself had close calls, just trying to get in and out of our The road has become unsafe to walk on. As the young lady, I support the, the dog walking, uh, initiative. We walk our dog every day, so do many of our neighbors, they all have dogs, especially the folks that live down by Great Horse. They're out there and they're walking their animals, or they're actually out trying to walk on that road, and it's just unsafe, the amount of traffic. Since West Valley closed and the church has been built out there, it's, it's just unbelievable. And Memorial Day was a nightmare. There, there was nothing but fifth wheel after fifth wheel after fifth wheel. Now we've got construction, we got, we got semis, we got them using their jake brakes going down that road now. So it's just, it's completely out of hand. By making the proposed intersection a four-way stop, you'll be mitigating the speed from fifty miles per hour down to twenty-five miles per hour. You'll also be making the turning situation at Pine Ridge and Southwest Streets safe. I also ask that the city consider putting a concave mirror where the, where it turns, where West Street turns into County Road. When you go down there, you can't see what's coming or going, so if there's somebody walking or somebody driving and you're hitting that curb, you just cannot see around the curb, it's blind completely. So, um, I ask that a, that a concave mirror be put in there as well. I've spoken to the State Patrol, County Sheriff, Woodland Park PD about my concerns, and I've had a positive feedback from all. Matter of fact, the Woodland Park Police Department, when, I've had them all at my house, by the way. So, uh, I've had nothing but positive feedback, they think it's something, something simple the city should do, uh, especially what since they closed West Valley, that that should have been one of the mitigating factors that they did when they closed that road, knowing that that traffic had to go somewhere else. So, it only makes sense that the, the road, and I don't know why it ain't a four-way stop anywhere, everywhere else in the city, there's a four-way stop. And, um, one last thing, I ask that you do not put speed bumps out there as in, as a countermeasure. Speed bumps, working with first responders, are, are not good. A first responder can blow through a stop sign, but he's gotta slow down for a speed bump. So just simply put and make, put two additional stop signs out there and slow the traffic down, and make it safe for everyone. You'll take that speed from fifty miles per hour down to about ten miles per hour in my home, in front of my house. So, it, it shouldn't be something that I have to come and beg for, it should have been done when West Valley was closed. So, um, I ask that you look at, send somebody out there, survey it, do whatever. They're currently collecting data on northbound Southwest Street right now, the, the PD is. So, um, you've already got the data from south, when the traffic's heading south, so you're collecting the data from the traffic heading north. It's not gonna be a high-speed issue because you've got it set, they've got the sign set so close to the curb. If you see speeds above thirty-five or forty-five mile an hour, that means they're coming out of that curb and it's only a hundred and some feet from the curb to where the sign is, they must be just hauling butt going through the intersection. I call, I call that the quarter-mile strip. So they're racing their cars from the stop sign that is down the road on Southwest Street, and then from that point on, it's just full bore up until you hit the curb. And also be note, note that there was three rollovers since I've lived there. So there's been three cars roll over in the curb since two thousand nine, and one of them took out a gas tank. So, it's lucky it didn't catch that tree on fire, because there's trees all around those gas tanks on Western. So I ask that you look at that, consider it, and make our community safe again, because I'm telling you, somebody's gonna get hit or killed on Southwest Street. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Mayor, can I add to this real quick? Would it, can we bring up, uh, Google Maps and get a view of it?
I don't think we're gonna do that today, but we can do it at a later date.
And, yes. Otherwise, I got a picture on my phone of it, but, um, so, that's all I got on this council.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Sally, you have thoughts?
Actually, Mayor Levy, uh, I think Director Wiley has some comments.
Miles and I have both chatted about this, uh, problem. I couldn't agree with the gentleman more about speed bumps, we do have to do a traffic study. Um, as he mentioned, there is a hard ninety-degree bend, a hundred and fifty feet down the road, and from his house down about another hundred and fifty feet, there's a stop sign. Uh, people's driving habits are what they are, and it's no disrespect or, it's, the people do what they're gonna do. I find it, uh, you know, and we could put a stop sign at every intersection, there's a lot of stop signs around there, I actually drive through there every day. Um, I've chatted with some of Miles's officers about the issue. Um, it's due to the closure of West Valley, I believe people are gonna learn that it isn't faster to go that way, it's just gonna take some time. Uh, before you, about a month and a half ago, we had another gentleman on South Park Street with the same complaint. I don't know if traffic has subsided on South Park, we've moved the speed limit sign around to those various areas to make people aware of how fast they're going, and he's absolutely right on the data. Out of the hundred vehicles, there were three that were going fifty miles per hour or more, which is, they were on a mission, and I think the chief said, "Were they four tires or two tires?" Because that's pretty incredible to get going that fast in that short of distance with a ninety-degree turn and a stop sign in the middle of it.
And I guess my two cents would just be, we have an issue down there. The issue was down on Valley Drive, it got shifted into the city, um, and I think that there could have probably been some additional, um, research done, um, by a traffic engineer or somebody that specializes in that kind of work prior to shifting all that traffic into the city. And I guess my concern is, um, we're having a problem on the other end, now we're having a problem on this end. I don't wanna go forward and fix just one problem at a time, um, I think we probably need to bring somebody in that has a better approach and a broader scope in terms of looking at solving this problem. Um, my hope is that over time, people stop using the shortcut, however, um, during this past weekend, traffic was backed up to Bluebird Hill, people were using that cutover, and I don't know if it's the GPS that's routing them down there, or if they are just locals who are using that as a shortcut, so, um, I, I absolutely agree that there is something that probably needs to be done, but I just, I am concerned about putting a stop sign at this location and the next location, because we're shifting that problem throughout that south part of town. And I think that we have, you'd have kind of a, kind of a more, um, all-encompassing approach to it. This is a section at a time.
So what do you see as the next step for us?
Um, I would talk to Kip in terms of having some form of, uh, traffic engineer or somebody that specializes in that kind of work.
We can budget to do a traffic study, um, and move from there. I know the county is collecting, um, vehicles, vehicle data, I haven't seen their, their counters up lately. Maybe they have some other data, but, uh, you know, I know they were looking at the closure for, I believe it was six months, and they were gonna reevaluate after that.
How long has it been closed now?
It was closed Memorial Weekend.
Okay. Well, part of this is inflicted upon us by a decision the county made. Does the county have, um, the appropriate engineers that could do the study for us for free?
I don't know.
Do we know?
I don't know their staffing level, I mean, they can budget, just like we can, to have studies done, I don't know.
Maybe they could, we could partner and cooperate, since it seems to be a joint issue, um, and see if we can't collaborate and come up with some kind of joint solution for the whole area, like Miles alluded to.
Well, and the county did look at other options, as far as closing down Southwest Street or two thirty-one, they're the same, the same road. Um, that was due, they couldn't close that down because emergency access had to go through there, it's a, it's a second route in and out of town.
Right.
Um, so there, there's probably other options, what they are, I couldn't tell you, just like Miles alluded to, is chasing that down, but I will definitely reach out to the county, um, see what their data is, see if they can do anything else.
Well, I agree though with, uh, the chief, is, it has to be an all-encompassing approach, um, but I certainly empathize with the situation at this particular intersection, I've driven through there as well, and it's-
It's not good.
It's not good.
Yeah, I ride my bike through there, I understand, I understand completely.
But I don't wanna just throw platitudes at it, if, if we can do something with the county immediately and figure out what the next step, step is, is my recommendation.
I got a meeting with Dan Williams tomorrow, I'll touch base with him, we'll, we'll go from there and try to get you guys involved in that, all right? Mr. Seavey, thank you for being here.
If you guys don't-
Excuse me, I'll let-
So, I ask that you really get on this and make this a priority, and here's why, winter's coming, guys. And with the amount of traffic that we got from the college out there on that road, you're gonna see accidents. And the state patrolman that I spoke to three times now, he's the one that's gotta come and investigate those accidents. So, I know that at Pine Ridge, there's gonna be, there's gonna be collisions. Because Shady Lane, um, is nothing more than ice, it's just an ice shield and the, I mean, you could put a sled on that thing and hit fifty mile an hour down that, down that road in the wintertime. So if you think that those people coming up that hill are not gonna collide with somebody going north on West Street, you're, you're gonna see those, those accidents. And I've been parking my vehicle out on the street, and I can legally do that, and whether people like it or not, most of my neighbors love it, especially those people that in my neighborhood that walk, or walk a dog or ride a bike, they're enjoying it, because it's slowing traffic down. And I will continue to park my car out on that road until something's done on that intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Seavey, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up for public comment on these items, there's a couple later on. If there's anybody else right now, if not, we'll move forward. Okay, we have no unfinished business tonight, we'll move on to ordinances on initial posting, and Noel's not here, so.
I will fill in for, uh, Ms. Pellegrino this evening. On first reading is Ordinance thirteen thirty-four. This is a conditional use permit request for Phase Two of the Assisted Living Facility that is located at Village Terrace. And to set the public hearing for, uh, September twentieth, this is simply an amendment to the second building that was planned originally, uh, in two thousand fifteen, when the original conditional use was, uh, granted for the first building, which is set to open very shortly. And the second building is going to be shifted to lots, uh, five and six, and, uh, so- And so Laura Pellegrino will have a full report for you on September 20th.
Counsel, any questions? We're on initial posting only today. If none, we'll just call for a motion to approve on initial posting. Excuse me.
Motion to approve ordinance 1334 on initial posting.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, Mr. Simmons, I see you're waiting and you're signed up, but I didn't know where. Do you want to, do you want to come and speak now?
I forgot. I'll repeat.
Good evening. Colt Simmons, Florissant, Colorado, 732 U.C. I'm just here to introduce myself. I know some of you folks. I'm the unopposed candidate for the county assessor. Wanted to introduce myself, say hi. I'm kind of being here from time to time, at least once a quarter. And continuing on the tradition of communications and transparency. And just want to let you all know that there'll be a new assessor in four months, five months, January, that'll be me. Something else happens, there's no other attendant. So I'm here to introduce myself, Air Force veteran. I was around the world for many, many years. Worked at a Space Command, North Town. The gentleman I've worked with, EM People and at Fort Carson, I was an incident commander at NORAD. So I'm familiar with fires, earthquakes, floods, nuclear, biological, chemical, radiological incidents, but they're not so nice. Had experience with those unfortunately. But I'm looking forward to working as the county assessor for y'all, working with y'all. And right now, just a private citizen and really don't have any comment about the current office. But we'll be, the county assessor's office does all the state law explicitly. Actually, it's 100% that you have to follow in the state law. But anyway, Colt Simmons. It's good to see some of the familiar faces. I'm here with Val and Mr. Sonier and Hillary, but you're Mr. Mayor. So just here to say hi.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Anything I can do for you down the road after I'm elected? I'm here to assist, here to listen, along with other officials, here to support the citizens and to have a fair and balanced assessment of properties, commercial and residential.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care. Excuse me, sir.
What a welcome approach, cooperation.
You're back. Thank you, sir. Take care.
Okay, we'll move on to number nine, public hearings. And Chrissy's not here. Suzanne, are you going to take this?
Yes, I'm going to fill in for Chrissy this evening. Before counsel this evening, we have an application for a new liquor license. And tonight is the public hearing for that case. We have an applicant called Pester Marketing Company and their, their trade name is Alta. They're located at 40 North US Highway 67 in Woodland Park. So you all know this gas station as the one by the smokehouse, the only one on 67. Applicant has a current sales tax license. The applicant is eligible for, application for a liquor license. The location is eligible to be licensed. The owners are here this evening, if you have any questions for them and their representatives. Possession of the property is documented by a lease through January 16th, 2038. The application was submitted to the clerk's office on May 24th. The property was posted on August 15th. The public notice was published in the paper on August 22nd. The character of the applicant is not an issue for this hearing. And the operation of this business is in compliance with local zoning, building, and fire regulations. All of the applicable fees have been paid and a petition proving the needs and desires of the neighborhood containing the signatures of nine business owners and residents in support of this, granting this liquor license. And again, the applicant and his representative are here in the audience.
Great, thank you.
This is for a 32 beer license.
Thank you. Is it Dennis? I don't know the last name. Did you say the last name, sir?
Yes, Dirksey.
Dirksey, and you have a representative with you?
Yeah. Yeah. So my name's Dennis Dirksey. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Pester Marketing, doing business at Alta Convenience. I live at 1239 West Lone Cowboy Drive in Pueblo West, Colorado. Unincorporated Pueblo West, Colorado. I have a couple of people here in case you had questions for them. And the first one is James Pickin. He's our area sales manager for this, for this district and also the site manager. Heather, I have a hard time with that one, sorry. Also Max Scott is here with Edepis and he, he is the company we hired to do our petition opinion poll results for us. I won't take up a lot of your time, I just wanted to give a little bit of background. I've been in the convenience store business for 32 years and I've been in a position to sell alcohol for several of them. We currently have 109 stores, over 750 employees. We have two locations in Woodland Park and one in Divide now. We currently have over 40 licenses and in the last four years that I've been in this position, we've had zero violations. We have read the Colorado Beer Code and we're familiar with the Colorado Beer Code. Legal drinking age is 21 years. Current age to sell is 18 years of age. Ours, we're able to sell is 8:00 AM to midnight. Acceptable identification, 95% of what we get is state-issued driver's license, which must not be expired. State-issued ID cards, military identification cards, passports, and A-LAN registration cards. A little bit about the outlet operation. The store location is open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Store currently has five employees. The beer would be located in view of the cashier at the register all the time. Our employee training, it'll be mandatory if it's approved, that all employees will go through TIPS training. We also have a bridge program for new employees until TIPS is available. It's called Techniques of Alcohol Management and it's specific to the convenience store industry. We're also a member of the bars program. What the bars program, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that or not, what the bars program is, is we have a company that we've outsourced that comes in, somebody between the ages of 21 and 26, to every one of our stores to do ID checks for tobacco and alcohol once a month. And if, and what they do is come in and if they can, if they're able to purchase it and they don't get ID, the cashier will get a red card. If they get ID, they give them a green card. And obviously, the red card is a bad thing and that starts our progressive discipline process if they get a red card. We send them back through training and give them a progressive discipline form. If it happens again, that's when we determine if we need to have the employee working for us. And the green card, on the other hand, is, is the positive thing. It's monetary value in our stores. They can go, they can use it to buy anything they want in the stores and it's to reward them for doing a good job. We ID anyone that appears to be under the age of 40. Our passport register system is capable of scanning IDs. And the last thing I'll say is if we ever have an employee sell to a minor, it's immediate termination. That's throughout our program.
Let me ask you this. Let's go back to 32 and 18 years old. Are there any 32 other distributions in Woodland Park?
Yes.
There are?
The grocery stores, yes.
Counsel?
That was the question I had. Are there any other convenience stores that sell 32? Not Safeway or City Market, but convenience stores?
Currently, just the grocery stores.
Just the grocery stores?
Loaf and Jugs. There's several convenience stores that sell.
Okay. And then any violations on tobacco products?
We've had some on, there were FDA's, I think we've had a couple of them, yeah. Over the last four years I've been in this position. We have 109 stores or lost stores.
We're in public comment. Anybody else in the audience like to comment on 9A? Sir, if you'd like, if you'll come forward. Give us your name and your home address, please.
Good evening. My name's Max Scott. I own and operate at this incorporated. We did the needs and desires survey on this license. He said unincorporated Pueblo County. I'm going to say our address is 1216 Tipperary Street in unincorporated Boulder County because if I leave the unincorporated out, I start getting the jokes again. We did a survey and prefiled, I think the last week in July, because this was originally set for the 7th of August. A little bit of history about me and my company. Last January, I passed into my 50th business year. We've done over 6,000 surveys in the state of Colorado. Many of those are under government contracts. We've been recognized in several Rule 106 decisions. And the format that we used on this survey, we've been using since 1974. It allows a person who's for dire and is a party of interest, that's a business owner or manager, a resident of the defined neighborhood, to sign either for or against and then write in any reason they'd like to communicate to the liquor authority. Part of my survey got written into the, or was read into the record. And the survey results for or against, for whatever reason, 46 businesses favoring, two against, 131 residents is favoring, 18 against. And in the column where they write in any reason, it's usually the people that oppose. We had three that said there's enough in the defined neighborhood. We have 13 abhorrents of alcohol and four miscellaneous reasons. The abhorrents of alcohol and miscellaneous reasons are desire, opposition, reasons only. The statute says the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and, not or, the desires of the adult inhabitants. And that gets shortened into a Colorado Supreme Court case as need and desire, not need or desire. So in this survey category, we have, if you round up, 90% favoring the issuance of the license. And then if you buy our argument and the court's remarks about our surveys and these 106 actions and subtract out the 13 abhorrents of alcohol, if that's a person that doesn't consume alcohol, they don't have a need for it, that's the purpose of this hearing. And then the four miscellaneous reasons, the survey result goes to 98%. These are exceptionally good results for C-store, 3.2% off-premise applications. This type of license usually gets the most conservative survey results and there's a number of reasons for that. It isn't like it's a hotel restaurant license and the police can easily check on it and supervise it and so on and so forth. People are concerned about off-premise sales. It's in a sealed container and it goes out the door and you don't know what happens to it after that presumably. So based on my experience and the industry, oh, I forgot to mention, the margin of bear is 1.7%. So you could add that in or subtract it out in either survey category, it's well over 50% and aren't used for the issuance of the license. Any questions? Yes.
If I go into the store and I buy two beers, I get three beers? Is that what the deal is?
I don't run the store.
Thank you.
I forgot one other thing. We enter into a contract with whoever it is. Our clients are Walmart, we did the Walmart, Safeway, we did the Safeway, City Market, Loaf and Jug. And we enter into an agreement and we don't guarantee survey results and we get paid in advance before I have a payroll. So that's part of the conditions of doing a survey.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else?
This, I lost the pool on the length of the meeting tonight. But anyway, this is the most extensive liquor application I've been through in this tenure. And so I'm interested to hear all these facts. I appreciate all this information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, we are in public comment. Anybody else from the audience would like to speak? This would be the time. If not, counsel, call for a motion to approve application from Pester Marketing. So moved.
Second.
Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move on in public hearings to ordinance number 1333. And Tanner Coy.
I never heard those statistics.
Good evening, staff. Everybody.
Oh, boy.
Tonight for us, for public hearing is ordinance by the lucky number 1333. Authorizing the city of Woodland Park, acting on behalf of the City of Woodland Park Downtown Development Authority, authorizing the issuance of its tax increment revenue bond, Series 2018, in a principal amount of not to exceed $1 million, et cetera. I think you know what this is. I think you know why this is. So I will say no more about it, other than I'm here to answer your questions. With us tonight are Mario Trimble of Cutac Rock and Conrad Freeman of Vector Bank, who can do a much better job of answering any technical questions you may have, and I can. Do you have any questions?
Counsel? Go ahead, Val.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bond on behalf of the DDA. However, my understanding is this basically is a city obligation. Is that true or is that a misunderstanding?
You know, it's, it's a bit confusing in that regard, but my understanding is that per the statute, there is no municipal liability for this debt. And if we turn to page 12.
I see someone approaching Tanner that's, would like to help you.
Well, you know, just to read straight from the document, "This bond does not constitute an indebtedness of the city within the meaning of any constitutional or statutory provision or limitation, shall not be considered or held to be a general obligation of the city and is payable and collectible solely from the pledged revenues of the authority as defined in the ordinance. The registered owner hereof may not look to the general fund or any other fund of the city for the payment of the principal of or interest on this bond, except the special accounts pledged therewith."
Yeah, I understand all that, but say the DDA defaults and that Vector Bank just says, oh, well, that's okay, we don't care. The city takes that on, I think. I know what it says here, but can somebody clarify that for me? Thank you.
There you go.
Mario Trimble of Cutac Rock, the council of the city. It's a pleasure to be before you all once again. So many familiar faces. I won't tell my customary story about being so nervous up here. Quite well. The city is the issuing entity, but the obligation that the security is the pledge of revenue stream. And there's no recourse other than the revenue stream.
And the pledged revenues, Mario, to be specific, is the TIF revenue that flows to the Downtown Development Authority.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The security would not include the property that's owned by the DDA, only the TIF revenue?
Correct, just the revenue stream.
And in fact, to be even more specific, all of the debt owed to Vector Bank is secured that way. Not just this piece.
With respect to this obligation?
This obligation.
And the Series 2011?
And the, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
That's correct.
The Vector Bank obligation is TIF revenue pledge.
So this, Tanner, or?
So, this, Tanner, or Mario, this is basically a line of credit, in a way?
No.
Because we're not, you're not taking out a million. You're gonna take out what you need, correct?
Yes.
So, but it's up to a million. If I'm gonna go buy a car, I've got up to $100,000, I can buy a car. If I buy a $50,000 car, I'm only taking $50,000. Can I take another 20 eventually?
For that car?
No, no. Well, for, to buy another car, for example.
I see what you're asking. The structure of the drawdown nature of the bond was selected by the DDA and negotiated with Vector Bank specifically to allow for the occurrence of the debt on a current basis, the initial draw that's discussed in the law. And if you can accrue on that disbursement in the, in a typical capital project, you would see the full amount dispersed, and you just would accrue on that full. So here, we're saying...
So basically, if they take out $500,000 instead of a million, can they still take out another $100,000 eventually?
Up to the maximum.
Of $1 million.
Or of $1 million.
Right. Okay, so, it almost is like a line of credit, that's the idea?
It is. A line of credit does not have a set purpose.
Well, for layman's terms, how about that? Yeah, for the...
You're asking a lawyer.
I know, sorry.
But no, I mean, there are a number of purposes identified at the top as the project. So, you know, one of them being gradient erosion. So if we do, if we correct pay for, this year, and then, that's a specific drawback that we can allow. It's maybe there's some other purposes that are approved.
No, I agree with that. I'm just trying to define what the, because when you see a million, most people will think, "Oh, you're taking out millions." See what I'm getting at? So, the question is, is that, that's the max? They can take out 400,000, and then eventually, if they need to take another 200,000 out, they will. That's kind of what I'm trying to get at for the layman terms. I'll just leave it at that. What you just mentioned about landscaping or erosion control, I'm hoping that this, Tanner, doesn't go to that. I hope it goes to one specific purpose that most of us know about, and that's it. I hope so. So, if you want to clarify on that, please do.
That's my hope, too.
Okay.
Matt, I'll just chime in, too. That is the goal of the board. This is an action that is not something that Tanner decides. This is something that's the board. And the Board of Directors, that is their intention and their hope, is that to take care of the initial expenses that need to be paid with those proceeds, and then leave it at that. We can't see into the future, but that is the intent, I think, of the entire board.
Well, that and back to cars, I would like a car, since you brought that up.
That's not a use in the ordinance.
Right now, and thanks, that's not a decision I get to make. I'm one of nine members that you've appointed to that board, and how this is, how things progress, I guess, from here, mostly have to do with their decisions and other circumstances that we may not control. I can tell you right now, there is no plan to spend any, to borrow this money and spend it on that property that's in place and approved. There is no plan to buy cars or anything else, as Councilmember Case just said. The immediate expenses that you're well aware of are all that's been planned.
Tanner, you told us last time you're gonna draw down about $300,000 of it to start. Will we be notified when there are any other drawdowns, once this is approved?
If there are any, I would be more than happy to notify you.
We would love to hear if there's any more money taken against that loan, against that bond, I should say. Anything else?
And ask the council liaison to the DDA board.
She'll probably just report that on the...
Absolutely. If there's any noise about it at all, I plan to bring updates to the council on our monthly meetings.
Appreciate it.
Anyway, so...
Thank you. Carol?
Really, a question from Mario again. In your assessment of the ability of this organization to repay the bond, you looked at, I'm sure, the sunset of the organization, I think it's 2032. If TIF payments did not increase again, or increase at all, if they were put on hold, do you believe that the organization could pay you back, or pay the bond back? I'm sorry.
That's a great question. That is more of a potential liability, so I'm gonna defer to...
Yes, ma'am.
I think, I said, we've been involved in this deal since 2005.
Excuse me, Conrad, before you go forward, just name and address.
We've been involved in this deal since 2005.
Your name and address.
Name and address, please. Sorry. There you go. Here we are.
Welcome.
Conrad Freeman, I'm with Vector Bank. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's great to have our branch right in the middle of the DDA, and so we're excited about that. We first got involved in this in 2005. This is the third time we're doing incremental debt. So I think one of the things we should think about is how successful this has been, because it just keeps driving more revenue. Specifically to your question, there are, and I don't remember the exact number, Tanner, I believe there's five other agreements where the DDA is currently paying money out to people that are subordinate to us for improvements that have been made in other projects. The last time we did this, it was to facilitate the auto parts store and the Family Dollar Store and the significant land, I guess, redevelopment that had to be done. When we underwrote this, I would tell you that we would be able to lend you more than $1 million. We felt that this was a good number to pick, and the reason we did is it exceeded what would probably be needed. And the reason we want to do this as a large amount, as $1 million, as opposed to doing it multiple times, because of the expense of the issuance. And we have to go through you to get the tax exemption from the federal government. So that's why the city's involved. As far as your question, very specifically, we've done all the financial modeling, including not only that sub-debt obligation, but also the projected operating expenses of the DDA. And then we still may get neither one and a quarter time debt service coverage. So there's more than enough revenue to pay this down, and it will be paid off early, is what our anticipation is. And so, you know, I don't know what else to tell you, except, you know, we're excited to be part of the credit. We think you've got a very solid project.
If there were a moratorium, though, on future TIF agreements, would that impact your decision?
That is what I'm gonna defer back tomorrow, because this is actually a DDA, and so a lot of stuff you hear in the news in Colorado is about specific URA projects or TIF projects. And this actually exists under a different statute, which is the Downtown Development Authority statute. I don't, we haven't, I know there's been some discussion about possibly introducing some legislation that would affect DDA's, but, you know, we had 1348 go through, I wasn't two years ago, and, but that didn't affect you because you're not a URA or a DDA.
Conrad, the interest rate associated, can you tell us off the top of your head?
I can't. It's in the documents, probably right in front of me if I never look at it, but it's a very good rate.
I'm sure it is.
It was 4.6 something.
Thank you.
Initially, and that was at the time, at that day. Understand, interest rates move all the time.
But that's fixed rate.
And it will be set when we close.
Fixed.
That will be fixed until it's all paid off.
Counsel, anything else?
Okay, yeah, now, there is one thing. So we're gonna do this initial draw. What we did not do at this point is fix what the rate would be on a subsequent draw, if you come back to use it again. And we would fix that under the same formula at that time.
So the four points...
Only that new draw would refix. The money that's outstanding stays the same.
Thank you. Carol?
Can the DDA draw on this extension, I guess, to the bond that they already have, to repay the city in any amount?
That's not my department.
They can use it for whatever they want.
Within reason, within the description of the uses in the ordinance.
And the approval of the board.
And the approval of the board. So, the ordinance is very specific, because in order to qualify for tax exemption, as it is, and get the rate that we do, it has to be specific purposes with which are defined in the ordinance, and has to be used that way in order to maintain the tax exemption status.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Mario, you can go further on that.
Well, and I would be remiss if I didn't speak up about this. We have been, our tax department has really run the room over this. I can't tell you how many times I've been called into the principal's office, our senior tax partner, and told to explain this one more time, so... This, the tax exempt nature of the deal and the purposes that are approved, it's pretty high on plan. We're very comfortable giving our opinion on this. When it comes to the loan between the city and the DDA, the issue that we run into is a very particular issue. For purposes of the IRS, you have to see the federal revenue code. The city and the DDA are essentially the same entity, and so you can't loan yourself money, and you can't borrow on a tax exempt basis. So there's an issue there. The discussion that I understand is that, or the thinking here was that the tax exempt purposes for which proceeds are gonna be expended would free up other monies that could potentially be used.
Sure.
So that's, I don't want to mislead you into thinking that you could have a draw and apply the proceeds to that.
That was worth the try.
On a tax exempt basis. If you wanted to do a tax, we could talk about that.
Mario, could you cover, then, what it can be used for?
Well, again, it's that entire universe of, well, the background. There is a broad universe of purposes that we can talk about, certainly capital projects, and we've talked about those in the past. Degrading and erosion control, I apologize, that was something that we sort of wanted to have in, because it's a good capital purpose. The repayment of extraordinary and non-recurring legal fees and other expenses related to the land dispute, that's absolutely a good purpose. Those were the two that were discussed, those were the two that were covered in the purposes section. There are others, I'm happy to expand the scope, but those are...
I found it. Thank you.
Just real quick, and I, it's kind of interesting that Carol brought that up, because she has an interesting point, is that, I think, two years ago, the city and the DDA were discussing the million dollar debt, and I was on the DDA at that time, and we truly didn't have the money to pay it, but all of a sudden, the DDA asked for a million dollar loan, and they get it, but two years ago, they couldn't have that and pay the city back. So, I can see where Carol's point is, is it's kind of, it's a shot at the council that, hey, you know, you're not as important as other priorities. That's kind of what I feel like at the moment.
Ray?
Well, I'd like to point out that two years ago, DDA finance was in much different shape.
No, and I was there. I was pushing for the payment.
And when considering the debt service and impacts on DDA finance and the budget, with that magnitude of a loan in place, it was, I don't even remember if it was possible. If so, it would have been very, very risky, probably not something that the bank would have looked upon favorably and put the DDA in a poor spot. I think this is a much more responsible structure to the debt at a time when DDA finance is in much better condition, and so I hope that helps understand this is not at all any shot at the council, or indication of priorities of the authority.
So, if this loan is paid off real, this withdrawal is paid off quickly, would the DDA consider coming back to the council and looking at maybe paying off the current pay structure to the city quicker?
I would look at that anyway, as the treasurer. I can tell you now...
I'm just throwing it out there.
Hey, it's my goal to retire all debt ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Including the city's.
Charlie?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out, too, that, as Mario just explained, issuing debt to pay back the city loan would not be a tax exempt issue, either.
No, I heard that.
It would not receive a favorable tax treatment, and would have cost not only the DDA, but the city additional monies. As Mario said, the statute looks at the two entities as being the same, and you can't loan yourself money.
Correct, but they...
And so, I'm just saying that, I just think that that point in time, and the circumstances that we're in now are very different, and we have obligations that have to be paid, and this appeared to be the best solution to that immediate need.
Correct. So when they pay off this withdrawal, I'm hoping that the DDA, I won't be on council, I'm sure you won't be either, and they'll come back to the council and say, "Hey, we'd like to pay off this debt quicker, can we renegotiate?"
Absolutely.
I'm hoping, and just, you might still be on the DDA, Tanner, who knows?
Are you imposing any prepayment penalties?
Sure.
Well, then, great, not as motivated.
I don't think I'll be alive when the debt's paid off.
Anything else?
I do want to say, I wasn't real clear on Councilmember Harvey's question about the TIF moratorium affecting the ability to repay, and if I did understand it correctly, I'm not sure it got answered fully, so I wanted to come back to that.
If there is an answer, I'm not, maybe I didn't ask it correctly, but I, if there's, you know, I know the DDA is considering moratoriums on some period of time on future TIF arrangements or agreements. Would that impact your status for this particular bond?
The, I think the best answer I can give you on that is that it would most likely have a positive impact, because a moratorium on a TIF reimbursement agreement means the DDA is not reimbursing those TIF revenues to an entity. So it would keep them. Natural Grocers is a great example of what happens in that situation. Those revenues will now be paid, and the authority can use them for any lawful purpose of the DDA's. Now, it can also have a negative effect if, in fact, the incentive would win development that won't come without it. And the moratorium might cause us to not attract a project that would otherwise be here, resulting in some portion of revenues being kept by the authority. So, it's impossible to know what the outcome of a moratorium would be, but...
Just to add to that, the analysis that we have done in terms of the reason of the expectation of repayment is sort of the baseline, and we don't look at whether or not there are future agreements that are in the works.
Okay.
Really, yeah, it goes to the existing revenue stream, and beyond that, and the reason I defer to Mr. Freeman, is that their analysis as to likelihood of repayment gives a lot more credit analysis, not a legal analysis. And I don't believe that they look to...
We all agree on the right ones.
Okay, thank you. That's, thank you. Explains it better to me.
Anything else? Anybody in the audience like to comment? Tony Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Tony Perry, 330 Ponderosa Court. Be very succinct, I'm sorry you lost your bet, Mr. Carr. First of all, I reluctantly support the concept of this debt service. You know, the first thought occurred to me, and thank you Vector for stepping in, listening to a 1.25 DSCR. I'm guessing there's not room to go ahead and add the city debt and take care of that, and it may not be in the universe. I guess, a couple of things to consider. I think we all know we're waiting on the verdict of the lawsuit. We don't know the ramifications of that yet. I went to seven of the eight court days as a citizen. I took my personal time, and I have my personal assessment of how it may go down, but I think this is an opportunity for the council, who's responsible for oversight of this body. I think Kelly's already starting to do a good job of getting better reporting, communicating better to the council. better to the council, I hope.
Thank you.
I see that. One thing to consider is, in that universe, is there room to add that additional city debt and just take that, make that ledger clear? I don't know. Another thing is, I would like that, instead of using the word "hope," which we just heard earlier, yet again, we hope we can do this, we hope it works out, why not we plan and execute? I think this was completely unavoidable, with a little bit better management personally, and it goes back to 2001. So, not pointing anyone out in particular, I'm just saying, maybe it's more prudent to wait for that verdict, to see how that turns out. The DDA's already defaulted on their payment date to the city. That's bad faith. That concerns me. The fact that we take on additional debt before paying our debtors, our creditors, that concerns me. That said, I reluctantly support it, if that's the direction you go in. I just think there's bigger pictures here. I think there's an opportunity to provide better oversight, better controls. We've talked about that. One of the things I suggested to the DDA Board, and I got to thank you, was preapproving every expense moving forward, and maybe even pushing it up to council. I think that's how we need to think about being more responsible in terms of the oversight. You know, during the trial, it was very clear, the attorneys were there to protect the DDA Board. You know, the council is who protects the citizens and the taxpayers. So, end of story. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anybody else? Mr. Labarre?
Mr. Mayor, Council. As a member or a property owner within the DDA, I've got...
Excuse me?
Pete Labarre. What address should I use?
How about your home address?
Home address? What is my, 615 County Road 281.
Thank you.
Unincorporated, Keller Cal. My concern is this, and it's language in the document, and it says, "may include but are not limited to grading erosion control." I think those, that verbiage should be stricken. Or, verbiage written, much to what Tony just said, to have this, have any additional funds expended that aren't expended to resolve the issues that are addressed here, come before council. Unfortunately, we don't have a very active public that gets involved in what's going on in DDA. That's individuals' fault. But, at least with the city council, you have a broader audience that hears about this and can comment on it. As Mr. Perry pointed out, city is still owed money, there's still payments that are due, those haven't been made. I think that's worrisome. And basically, this is tax dollars that's being deferred to the DDA that could be used for other things, and you've heard it all before. Could be going to the fire department, could be going to the ambulance district, could be going other places. So, I think that oversight and that control, in taking out this language, makes it more specific, holds them accountable. I don't disagree with the bond, I don't disagree with the necessity to do it. I would also suggest, and concur again with Tony, that you should delay this until after you get the court hearing. Excuse me. So, you know what the extent of the problem is? And we've heard a variety of numbers, and we're still not certain if it's over. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Pete.
Thank you.
You know, for me, I've got all the confidence in the world, Pete, with our council representative on DDA, and that we will be very clear as to what's going on there. And I know that Kelly is gonna hold their feet to the fire. So, I appreciate your comments. I think we're in a really good spot now relative to kind of the cooperation between DDA and our council representative. And so, moving forward, I think we're in a lot better place. I appreciate your comments, so...
Green erosion?
Anybody else?
Quick question for Tanner. This bond, is it, Mr. Labarre brought up a very valid point, is it needed now, or is it only if we need it?
I can't predict the future.
Well, no, no, I mean, do we need it now to pay debt that we have now?
So, all I can tell you is that it appears crystal clear that in order to complete this year with a positive fund balance and the bills paid, this will be needed. There's no question. And, so that being said, to wait till next week or next month is really delaying the inevitable. Here's where, essentially where we're at. A $350,000 initial draw will put the authority on solid financial ground with all payments being made this year that need to be made. And, in the event that, so the suggestion is wait until after the judge's ruling? Here are the outcomes, okay, to consider. The ruling is in the favor of the authority and the authority's awarded damages. Great, ruling in the authority's favor, can we collect that money? Can we do it this year and use it to pay the bills this year? The odds are slim to none. So, this would still be necessary under that scenario.
I wouldn't characterize the odds, because you don't know what the odds are. But, go ahead.
But, you can make your own assessment.
He's being hypothetical, but sure.
If the judgment is a net neutral, and between the plaintiff and the defendant, no money is to change hands, this is necessary. If the judgment is in the plaintiff's favor and damages are assessed and the authority is penalized, this is needed. So, to wait just seems unnecessary and will cause further delay in tying up the financial loose ends of this lawsuit.
Okay, so I will bring up one thing that Mario mentioned, that if you take a second withdrawal, they don't know what the interest rate for that second withdrawal would be. Is that what I heard?
It's based on...
The interest rate will reset, meaning they will recalculate based on where the rates are at the time that that second draw comes.
So...
And it will only be on that portion of the second draw.
I got that part.
That the rate resets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the question is, would it hurt to wait two weeks, three weeks, to just do a, maybe hypothetically, if DDA does need the extra money to take care of whatever the results of the case are, wouldn't it be nice to have a lump sum with one interest rate than two lump sums with two different interest rates?
Well, yes and no. So, it's not quite that simple.
Neither here nor there, but it's an option.
Essentially, any future draw, as Councilmember Case just pointed out, is, it comes at its own interest rate on the amount borrowed. There isn't, at that point, it's a single loan with a single principal amount and a single interest rate that would be considered perhaps a blended rate, and I might be wading into somebody else's waters here, but it's still one loan with the same amortization schedule. It just is a blended rate at that point. Now, does it hurt to wait two weeks?
Yeah, does it hurt?
Well, that's an important question. The people that are owed the money say that it matters. They've been owed for some time, they would like to get paid, and paying the bills in a prompt fashion is important to us, as has been pointed out already this evening. The authority's behind schedule on debt service payments and paying other bills. We prefer not to wait longer than necessary. Secondly, on that note, the Board of Directors has already decided that, should this pass tonight, to wait out a 30-day referendum period and not close on the loan until 30 days from now anyway. So, we still have some time to go. It is most likely that the judge's ruling will be in before we close on the loan, and that will not be an issue.
You still have to pay lawyers.
Right.
So, the other option, the DDA, if they got into financial trouble, would hold off on paying the TIFs? Why is that not being considered?
Well, it's highly unlikely that the DDA will fall into that position. The revenues, we just had the certification of values come from the assessor for the year, the final certification comes in December, but the initial's out. And our revenues right now are projected at over $600,000 for 2019. With two new projects under construction, being a Natural Grocers with no TIF reimbursement, and a five-plus-million-dollar Microtel Hotel, TIF revenues are going to climb. Those won't hit the tax rolls until 2019 with revenues in '20. So, the future is, as I've been saying since I've been treasurer, still very, very bright from a DDA finance standpoint. Not paying the TIF reimbursements that are contractual obligations is highly, highly unlikely. Next year is the last year for reimbursement of one of the largest, which is the dinosaur resource, Rocky Mountain Dinosaur Resource. That obligation will retire then, freeing up even more TIF revenue.
Have we started paying the apartment complex?
Oh, yes.
Anything else before we close?
Good, thank you.
Do very well.
Close this? Go ahead, Val.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was gonna make the point that it's a payable, we've got a constant payable right now. I don't know if you have net 90 or net 180, but probably not. The other question that Citizen Labarre brought up was about this loan to the city, payment being delayed. One of the reasons we were given at the time was that there was large legal expenses. This bond is hopefully to resolve those payables. Does that free up the interest of the Board of the DDA to come back with the payment of the city that's been delayed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nothing else? I'd like to hear a motion to approve ordinance number 1333.
Motion to approve ordinance 1333 as presented?
Second.
Thank you. Sally?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Labarre?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanye?
Yes.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Case?
Yes.
And Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to, we have no new business, move on to reports. Start with tomorrow morning, and every Friday through September 28th, from 8:00 to 1:00, Woodland Park Farmers Market in Memorial Park. Saturday, this Saturday, 7:00 to 2:00, the annual citywide garage sale at the Woodland Park High School. Also Saturday, from 8:00 to 3:00, the annual Cruise Above the Clouds at Memorial Park. Great event, everybody should try to attend. They gave over $30,000 back to the community last year, so please support as well as you can, it's terrific event. Also Saturday, the Woodland Music Series Blues, Hazel Miller will be at the Midland Pavilion. She's amazing, if you haven't heard her before. Tuesday, I'm reaching out to everybody, so listen, please, I would like the biggest turnout ever at our 9/11 ceremony. Tuesday at 7:00 in Lyons Park, we'll put the flags out at 7:00. And from about 7:30 to 8:00, 8:15, there'll be a short ceremony. And everyone is invited, and it's as, it's as good as it gets for a community event in Woodland Park with all the retired military folks that we have here, first responders. It's just a great way to honor all those people and all those that were killed on 9/11.
Mr. Mayor, did you say that was 7:00 AM?
I said, 7:00 AM Tuesday, September 11th. 7 for the flags, and 7:30 to about 8:15 for the ceremony. Also Saturday, September 15th, that's a week from Saturday, and the 16th, the annual Rocky Mountain Oktoberfest at the U-Pass Cultural Center. Deb mentioned that, and we'll tap the first keg at 11:00 on Saturday. And then Tuesday, August 18th, from 5:30 to 7:00, Business After Hours, this month hosted by UC Health at Pike's Peak Regional Hospital. And, that's all I have, Val.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keep Woodland Park beautiful. We had a nice teenager social event, ice cream and hot dogs event today, right back here in front of the teen center. That was a nice thing that we do for the kids here. We also have a new building out back in the parking lot over by the, actually, it's by the dumpster, but it's a little shed where we're going to reinstate the teenagers doing recycling. We're gonna work on that, they picked up some scrap lumber and gonna put shelves in there, so we're gonna reinstate that program. Laura Pellegrino's been instrumental in keeping that going. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, just a little more information about the DDA. We've been discussing, doing some, looking at, kind of just cleaning up. We have an opportunity with Peewitt Construction while they're doing the work over on...
Park Street.
Park Street. They're going to stage their materials and their equipment on the DDA property and have graciously offered to do some work for us as they vacate that area and do some grading and some work for us while they have their equipment there. So, we appreciate that, and that's a great offer from them. And we'd like to, we're looking at cleaning it up, stabilizing it, and kind of just making it a little more appealing to the eye. And we're not talking money, we're talking work, and there may be a little bit of funds involved in doing that, but it's going to just kind of help that look a little more attractive to people that are driving through our city. So, we've been discussing that. Obviously, we talked about the bonds, we did decide that it was prudent for us to let the referendum period pass after this ordinance was approved, so that we don't spend money and then see some group of citizens put something on the ballot to revoke that. So, we're doing the right thing, and we'll be closing that and paying off our bills that are owed, and I'm sure the attorneys will be grateful for that. So, thank you to the council and to the citizens for your support on that. And, we've had some good input from, number one, Mr. Perry and things, that we're looking at, tightening up some internal controls, and continue to report back to the council and keep you in the loop of our, because we really, we really want that partnership and that city, that DDA and the community partnership to revitalize and really take off. We have a good group with a good heart and really are trying to do the best we can, so... And, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
I just want to know if it's gonna be 3.2 beer or real beer at Oktoberfest?
Real.
I'll be there.
You ready?
No, I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Paul?
I'd like some guidance. I have what Main Street worked has been to the city. It's two pages, really not that long, but I would like to submit this for our next council meeting, so all the council members can see this with their own eyes.
That's great.
And not take up any further time.
Give it to Suzanne, give it to Suzanne.
I will. And, I also would like to add that the level of questioning and the conversations that take place are really, really very, very interesting, and they really are to the point and drilling down and providing valuable information. For me, number one, and I believe for the citizens and for this council and everyone involved, and I deeply do appreciate the way it is going. I'm learning an awful lot, and I appreciate...
Kelly?
Thank you.
How you working? I appreciate you, Lily?
Thank you.
And thank you for new council members.
I can't forget Carol there, she's a wealth of information when it comes to this. No, forget about it. But, thank you very much.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I don't have a city attorney or a city manager. Do you have something for us, Ally?
I just have one brief item to share with the council. Suzanne needed to depart to catch an airplane, so I just wanted to share with you, a couple of months ago, you'll recall that we adopted the 2015 International Building Code, and the chairman of the Board of Review, Mac McVicker, is planning to do a training for the contractors and architects and anyone else who is interested in learning more about the International Energy Conservation Code. the International Energy Conservation Code 2015, and that will happen in this room on Friday, September 14th, at 2:00 PM. And we, our goal is to help our contractors as much as possible to be able to understand the new rules and the exceptions that Woodland Park has for the 2015 IECC.
Thanks once again, the time on the 14th?
It is at 2:00 PM.
2:00.
In this room.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'd just like to tag on to what Paul said. The budget meeting today, I thought, was outstanding, and I appreciate everybody's input, and not just what was said, but how it was said, and I think we're really heading in a great direction, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.